We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, July 17th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, let's stand together this morning as our county attorney, Mr. Grady will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to remain standing after the prayer for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on us, melt us, mold us, fill us, use us. Direct our actions by your holy inspiration and carry them on with your gracious assistance so that every prayer and work of ours may begin with you and through you be brought to successful completion. Spirit of the living God, fall afresh on us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we, good morning to each of you, and we welcome you to the Board of Commissioners meeting, which is your meeting. To those who may be viewing online, we welcome you also this morning. I would ask for those of us in attendance today to please let's make sure that our phones are on silent so they wouldn't disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any agenda items that you desire to add or to pull to the agenda this morning?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a change, please, for number three. Colonel Burke's has been rescheduled for November 20th, and Coastal Women's Shelter will be presenting this morning.
Okay, so there's a request to add Coastal Women's Shelter, a presentation on item three, instead of Colonel Burke. Are there any other items that you desire to pull or add? All right, here none, do I have a motion that we will accept the agenda with necessary changes?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second, any discussion on the motion. Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Before we go to item one, I would like to ask the Commissioners, if you would, to allow for Chairman's privilege this morning. We have many great invited guests here. We appreciate all of you being in attendance, but definitely we have two this morning, two young citizens that we want to recognize and give them the opportunity to come and to just say a word or two to the Board of Commissioners. The first we have, and these are the North Carolina Association County Commissioners, they're youth voice representatives. And the first one that we have with us is Ms. Keesha McDonald, who represents the Boys and Girls Club. And I'm going to ask Ms. McDonald, if she will, to, if she don't mind, to come forward here to the podium and introduce herself and just tell a little bit about what she's going to do. Welcome this morning. You're with friends. Don't be nervous.
Um.
Hold the mic.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Keesha McDonald. I attend the New Bern Boys and Girls Club Teen Center. I am a rising senior at New Bern High School. Um, a little bit about me, I've been in Boys and Girls Club since the club opened up here in New Bern in 2015. Um, I'm very excited to be the representative for the Craven County Youth Center that we have here from Boys and Girls Club. Um, I am very thankful for this opportunity because I am very passionate about, like, youth having a voice.
Great job.
Great job.
We thank you for that, and you did great. And then also, we have Caitlin Gibson, who is the Representative of Cooperative Extension for H. So, welcome, if you will come forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Gibson. I'm the first high school graduate from Pelletot Academic Center for Excellence. I began to love 4H at a young age. Um.
Will your mic down?
Oh, my apologies. I began to love 4H at a young age. I have so many different creations along the way, such as growing my own garden, um, creating robots, making movies here and there, um, also take classes for 4H as well, like public speaking, making movies with my mom, Ms. Ashley. Um, throughout my work with 4H, I had developed important skills like leadership, teamwork, responsibilities. I appreciate 4H and Ms. Ashley for a wonderful opportunity to use my creative thinking. Thank you, Craven Community Commissioners, for this time for me to share my amazing experience for 4H, and I want to say thank you all.
Thank you. And I think that these young ladies need a picture with the Board of Commissioners, so if two of you don't mind, you can come right here and stand if you want to in the front. And the board, come and let's stand behind them, please.
Absolutely.
Here, look, y'all want to come just a little bit?
We can be a little friendly.
All right. All right, thank you. And again, we appreciate both of you and for your boldness this morning to come and stand in what you're doing. We appreciate you. All right, Commissioners, item one that we have this morning is the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, you have the minutes of the June 29th, 2023 special session, minutes of the July 5th, 2023 regular session, tax releases and refunds, the CARTS request for a public hearing for Title VI program plan, the economic development request for a public hearing, for the North Carolina Department of Commerce grant, also a Child Support Awareness Month proclamation, and then lastly, a recreation donation for the shed structure at the pickleball courts. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull from the agenda this morning? Here none, do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, item two, I think, do we have our representatives from Senator Budd's office here with us this morning? We do, all right. We want to welcome Mr. Sam Schumet, who is the Southeast Regional Director, and if you want to, you come right forward. We welcome you this morning.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. It's good to be here on behalf of U.S. Senator Ted Budd. We're still getting our feet wet, and I've only covered this area for three months now, but appreciate the invitation to come and speak here today and share some things about our office and things he's working on in Washington, which we think are relevant to folks here in Craven County. The House just passed their version of the NDAA on Friday, but the Senators, all eyes and ears on that as he sits on the Senate Armed Services Committee in addition to the Senate Small Business Committee. His third committee assignment is health, education, labor, and pensions, and the fourth one is commerce, science, and transportation. So, we're really in a prime seat to advocate for eastern North Carolina and look forward to doing so over the next six years. I would like to read really quick some of the items that he has secured for Cherry Point and is going to continue to fight for in this year's NDAA, which is $109.5 million thus far. There's $40 million to begin construction of a maintenance facility and Marine Air Group headquarters, $50 million to begin construction of a new maintenance and operations facility for the Second Low Altitude Air Defense Battalion, and $19.5 million to complete an aircraft maintenance hangar. And we will continue to keep folks in the community aware of some of those issues. Additionally, they're working on FA reauthorization and a plethora of things related to veterans' health care over the next couple of weeks before the August recess. A few of you may know, but Senator Budd's mother was born and raised in New Bern, so Craven County has a very special place in their heart, and he looks forward to being here later on this year and wanted me to share that with y'all on his behalf. While I did not grow up in New Bern, I'm excited to be here and hope to be more involved in the community. Fayetteville is currently my temporary base where I grew up, but I'm focused on the counties that I cover run from Moore, sorry, Moore County all the way to Carteret down to New Hanover and then over to Scotland. So, but looking forward to being in Craven on average probably once to twice a month, and look forward to working with y'all as you're out and about in the community if there's things that we can ever do, whether it's helping folks with renewed or expedite passports or issues with social security disability insurance or any problem with the federal government, even if it's taxes. Just know you can pick up the phone and call me, and we'll jump right on it. And thank you again, and look forward to what I hope's a fruitful relationship moving forward.
Well, we thank you, sir, for taking your time to be with us today. And any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just, my only question would be your contact information. Looks like you're ahead of me on this.
I was going to ask.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
And definitely we'll pass this on to staff, and so they'll have it for their records too. But thank you again for taking your time to be here.
Yes, sir.
Look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, item three, Commissioner Mitchell, you had asked that we have Coastal Women's Shelter presentation on item three, so I'm going to just turn it over to you and let you introduce these folks this morning.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'd like to start out with introducing Chaplain Jim Dobbs, excuse me, who is Chair of the Board of Directors for Coastal Women's Shelter. And if you and the Executive Director would come up, please.
It's a good organization.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And the background on this for the people of the county and for the Board of Commissioners is Promise Place abruptly closed its doors earlier this summer. And Promise Place was the only organization that dealt with victims of sexual trauma in this area. The Coastal Women's Shelter has stepped up. By the time we got to talking to them, they were already planning on how could they meet that need in this community, and that will be for victims of sexual abuse and domestic violence, but for 18 and up. Children will be moved to, or will be, the needs of children who have been sexually abused will be addressed by another organization that is already dealing with childhood abuse. So, now that Coastal Women's Shelter is expanding its mission and is moving forward to meet these needs here, I'd ask them to come and talk to the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, my name is Amanda Delgado. I serve as the Executive Director of Coastal Women's Shelter. I've been in this, with this agency for over six years. In that time, I've served in different capacities at different levels within the agency. I have been a victim advocate, I've been Shelter Director, and now I serve as the Executive Director. So, that has afforded me the opportunity to see this agency at many levels, which has opened my eyes to a lot of things that we need to change, we need to move forward in, and we need to expand in. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Mitchell, as well as County Manager Jack White, for affording us this opportunity to be here to share with you all today. I'd also like to thank the Commissioners for their continuous support over the years. Craven County Commissioners has always been a huge supporter financially and with their support of Coastal Women's Shelter and the individuals that we serve throughout the year. Coastal Women's Shelter, for over 35 years, has served victims of domestic violence in Craven, Jones, and Pamlico County. As Commissioner Mitchell has mentioned, Promise Place has recently closed, and we are now expanding our services to support individuals that are victims of sexual assault as well. With that, we will continue to provide our services that we already provide for victims of domestic violence, but of course, expand that on, beyond that reach. We provide court advocacy for individuals that need to become safe, whether it be with a protective order, filing charges against their abuser. We provide crisis counseling, so of course, with that, our main focus is safety of the individual that needs our assistance. We also have a crisis line that we run 24/7, 365, so if it's 2:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, and someone is going through a crisis, they can call that number and reach a staffed individual that is trained and to get them connected with services within our agency. We also do community awareness, so a lot of times we hear folks say that they've never heard of us, and the reality is, if you don't need our services, you're probably not going to look us up. So, we really like to be out in the community to get our name out there, especially now with the expansion. We want to make sure that folks know exactly who they can call when they are in that need. We go out to the hospitals when the hospital or the emergency department gives us a call so that we can connect with folks during that time as well. A lot of what we do is moral support, so making sure that those that go through these situations never feel alone. We never want someone to feel like this has only happened to them and no one else can understand. So, we want to make sure that we're providing that support in every process that we do. We also have an emergency shelter, which is one of the main programs that the Commissioners supports. So, if folks are unable to stay safely in their home, they are able to come into our shelter, and then we can provide services through that. We also have transportation assistance as well as other services after the initial crisis. So, I'm going to allow Reverend Dobbs to speak.
So, I have the privilege of serving as the President of the Board of Directors. In addition, I've been, I've been the pastor here in Havelock for 21 years and pastor-ordained for 24. And I have to admit, in all those years, I never thought of domestic violence. I never thought that it was something that I really needed to be, something to be concerned of, because it just wasn't something out in the open. But it is real. The statistics that we have here, not only in our state, that come from the NC Council for Women, is there are 20, 20 people every minute are affected by domestic violence. That works out to be around 10 million people a year. The fact is that there is one in four women and one in six men are affected by domestic violence. For the North Carolina Department of Women, their statistics last year, for the fiscal, the fiscal year of 2021, 2022, they received over 75,000 calls for service for, from them alone. And of that, 78% were women, 16, or 13% were men, and also then, they also received almost 12,000 calls for service for sexual assault. 78% were women, 13% were men. Of sexual assault, the fact is, only 4% of those calls were by people who were strangers. So, it is something that affects people very near and dear, and those are just the statistics for North Carolina. And so, we can see that it is something that affects us greatly. So, we wonder, well, why is this such a great thing, and what is the need? The need is here in our community. It is not something we'd like to talk about, it's not something that we want to talk about, but we need to talk about. Coastal Women's Shelter has done an amazing service. Last year, we had over 700, 700 calls of service that we service. We service over 700 clients. In the month of June, we had almost, I mean, I've moved my notes too quickly. A month of June, we had 700, or four, or we had, in the month of June, we had five clients in our safe house, which was 50 days worth of people, and then 150 meals. Last year, we served 702 clients, and we had 47 residents within our safe house for the year. So, what are things that need to be done? We are a nonprofit. We've been affected by some of the things, especially as we expand services. Funds are obviously something that we definitely need, but we also need to help the word, getting the word out. We need help with folks who can help with the opportunities to volunteer. One of the things that we have, Amanda mentioned, is our safe house. Our safe house is new to us in the late 90s, but it's a, or late 80s, early 90s, it's a house that was built in the 50s, late 60s, early 70s. As you all know, if you own a house and it's from the late 60s, early 70s, it's coming to the end of its livelihood. So, we're looking at trying to look at our dream of Safe House 2.0 so that we can be able to reach out to our community even greater. There's, there's many opportunities, especially as we expand our services, of how are we able to continue to provide office space, counseling space, programming space, and then continued services to those in need.
So, one of the things I'd like to mention is, contrary to our name of Coastal Women's Shelter, we do serve all individuals of domestic violence. So, when Jim is talking about Safe House 2.0, the hope and dream for that is to expand it so that we can take more than 16 individuals at a time, so that we can safely bring in those of different identifying genders in a safe manner. So, that is the hope for the future. Again, I'd like to thank you all so much for your continued support, for allowing us this opportunity today to be here and speak about our agency. We will be available, we're always, honestly, we're always available. I'm always on the clock, I'm always working. So, if there's any questions at all about how you yourself can get connected, or maybe your church group, your place of work, or anything like that, if you'd like to see how you can get connected, please reach out to me. We're always trying to get connected with our community partners and making sure that we continue to move this mission forward. As I tell folks, it's not just them or us, it's a community, and it's going to take a community to change this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Comments?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair. Promise Place received funding from the State of North Carolina to address the needs of sexual assault victims. When Promise Place closed so abruptly, I don't quite know what happened to all of those funds. I know some have been redirected to Coastal Women's Shelter, but I don't, I'm not certain that all of them have. And just because the organization closed does not mean that the need ceased. I would ask the board to consider a letter from the Board of Commissioners to the General Assembly as we have done in the past, supporting this organization and asking all assistance possible.
Okay, Jack, before we entertain the motion or whatever, do you want to make any comments? Have you got the information that you need to properly draft that?
Yes, sir. I'll, and of course, I can give Pastor Dab and Amanda as well for information I might need. But yeah, I think the letter would be great. I think there's money that was allocated that needs to be reallocated, it seems like, and we'll just get a letter out this week to the folks in Raleigh.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell. Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Hunt makes the second. Any discussion on the motion? Everybody understands what the motion is?
Yes.
All right, here no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right, you have anything you want to add, Jack?
It's, sometimes things happen for a reason, and I can't explain it, but from time to time, the county employees, we do a charitable day where we allow the folks to wear blue jeans. And it just so happened, in early July, we had one of those around the 4th of July, and it happened to be Coastal Women's Shelter was our month. And we actually have a check for you this morning. It just happened to be downstairs, I was about to drive it over anyway. And I thought, what a, what a great opportunity. Avery, if you'll join me up here, Warren.
Wow.
We even got the Bob Barker check.
There you go.
But, Ms. Amanda, Pastor Dab, we raise $526 back in July for you guys on the Jeans Day. For the Craven County employees, I'll just present that to you guys.
No, no, no.
We'll stand, we'll stand up, we can stand up.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, I visited with these folks prior to that day, and I just got to compliment Amanda and her team. They do a fantastic job. Commissioner Mitchell was with me. It's amazing the work, and I'm really excited about them taking a step forward in this new adventure, because we really need it here in Craven County. So, that's, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I want to be at the bank when you take that.
I'll let you know when I'm going. Actually, I'm going right after the meeting.
And I will have to say for our pastor, Commissioners, I don't know where the rest of you know, but he is George Liner's pastor, so he has a tough road to hoe.
He keeps me busy, that's for sure. But, no, it's a privilege and a joy, so.
Thank y'all both for being here today. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank y'all.
Item four we have this morning is a presentation from Ms. Susan Williams, our new director for the Board of Elections, and she's here.
Yep. Susan, if you'll walk up. Commissioners, I'm really pleased this morning. Susan's been with us for a few months now, and she's settled in down at Elections. She's doing a great job, and we thought it'd be a great opportunity for her to introduce herself to you and tell you what's going on downstairs. So, Susan?
Welcome this morning, thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you, Jack. So, I am Susan Williams, and I was born in Pender County, raised in Duplin, served four years in the Navy, went back to Duplin, had never voted, didn't care about politics. A friend of mine was working in a precinct. She said, "We need more precinct officials." I said, "Oh, I can do that." So, I went over there and ended up staying for three years, worked every position in a precinct and every polling, every station in there. So, I'm well versed in how that all works. Then, in 2014, right after the municipal election, the permanent staff left, and they asked me to come in and run their offices. So, I went in as a part-time worker and with another part-time staff member, we ran that office until January, when they appointed me as their specialist. They hired a deputy and a director. They did not stay, so in five months, they appointed me as the deputy director. And then a year later, they moved me up to director, right before the 2016 presidential election. So, I stayed there until 2019, and then went to Pender County and served there for three years, and then took a little break. And then Melanie said, "Well, they still haven't replaced me yet." So, I said, "Well, why don't I apply in Craven?" Because I love New Bern. So, here I am to serve the citizens of Craven County. So, that's enough about me. Let's talk about elections. So, right now, we are just doing our mid-year campaign finance reports. If you have one to turn it in. There's a few election bills at the state right now that we are keeping an eye on. No worries, whatever happens, we're just going to flow with that. There are some current law changes that I'd like to take a moment to just mention here. The Supreme Court did rule that it was constitutional for felons to have to complete their sentence in full. So, the law that was changed in 2020 has now been removed, and we will go back to prior 2020. Our office was required to move over 140 individuals, and we have done so and sent out letters to them. We have one challenge at the moment, and we'll be hearing that later. The Holmes versus Moore photo ID case, the Supreme Court reversed the injunction. Photo ID statutes are enacted. The ones that were enacted in 2018 and 2019 are being implemented. We are waiting on the state to give us further instruction and the program needed to print the complimentary ID in our office. You also can go to the, direct anyone you know of that needs a photo ID. They can go to the DMV and get a free one there. Then, there is a federal case pending against that, but it's pending, and there's no injunction at this time. So, we're going to move forward with that. Also, there are Harper versus Hale and Hall redistricting case. The Supreme Court did reverse its prior ruling in that case and has now ruled that partisan gerrymandering claims based on the state's constitution cannot serve as the basis of a lawsuit in a state court. And as a resort, the court has, as a result, the court has disavowed the prior rulings that required legislature to redraw the districts that were originally enacted in '21. So, going forward, the court has given General Assembly the opportunity to enact all new districts for the State House, the State Senate, and the U.S. House for 2024. And that's all I have for you.
All right, questions this morning? Well, we do thank you for your service, appreciate you, what you're doing, being here today, Vice Chairman.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. That is, the last election, we were without. And it wasn't, it wasn't pretty, it was real challenge. So, we are very thankful to see your face and you're, having you in place.
Thank you.
For the, for, and we, you know, we got through that all right, but it was, it was a challenge. There were a lot of, a lot of, particularly the employees that worked for you had a, had a tough time.
Yes, sir.
So, we're just glad you're here.
Thank you, sir. And I do want to speak to that really quick and just say that the first thing I did when I arrived was to audit that election. And that election did get carried off perfectly. There was no issues with that election. And I should mention that I have always promoted a team, whatever county I was in. And I got here, and the first thing county manager said was, "Welcome to Team Craven." And I was like, "Yes, somebody's embracing that before I have to introduce it." So, I do know about the team effort, and I know about the work that they did to help that office, and I know that that staff was grateful. I'm grateful, and I am so excited to be a part of this group.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, Commissioners on the Departmental Matters, item five, we, first, we have Mr. Andrew Shorter, the Airport Director, who will come forward to discuss FAA grant funding. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Appreciate your time this morning. This grant that I'm talking about this morning is a grant that was awarded to us under a competitive nature, airports across the country, the bipartisan, under the bipartisan infrastructure law, Airport Terminal Program, so B.I.L.A.T.P. is what we call it. We competed for that. There were only three airports in North Carolina that were awarded grants under this process, and that was Charlotte, Asheville, and ourselves. So, I think we're keeping pretty good company there. It is a grant that helps us It is a grant that helps us continue with the terminal improvement project. So about last year this time, we had the initial grant for that project, which was $13 million. So this is the additional $5 million to go towards the total that is $26 million for that project. Probably be back here in another 60 to 90 days with the annual grant, which will be about another $4.5 million for that project, bringing up the total to about $22 million from the federal government to fund the terminal improvement project. The remaining funds of that will be our match that we're required to give for these grant programs, and we were actually using the North Carolina State Airport Improvement Program allocation that we get every year to do that. So a little bit of a high-wire act, as we, you know, signed that contract last year for $26 million, but we were confident that we would compete well for all these grants. And so I think this is just something that's come into fruition, kind of, you know, knock wood the way we planned it. So we're very happy with that. As far as the terminal project right now, if you've driven past the airport, maybe down Williams Road, you can kind of see towards the terminal that the steel structure is going up, and that's the new 10,000 square feet of the terminal that's being erected right now. But also, if you've been in the terminal, you'll see a lot of construction going on as we have to move some mechanical electrical plumbing inside the terminal. So it really looks like we're, we're doing a lot there, which we are, kind of call it, we're changing the tire while we're driving the car. So everything is operating normally in the terminal, we just have to make exceptions for some of the areas where the construction's going on. Everything is on time, on budget. We expect to have the new portion completed next May, so we'll have some kind of ribbon cutting for that. And then ultimately, the project should be complete next September. It was a 730-day project, so basically a two-year project. We're very happy with the construction company that's doing it, Montieth, out of Wilmington. They've been fabulous partners, and we couldn't be more pleased. So what we're asking for today is the Chairman to sign this grant, to accept it like we do our other FAA grants that we get.
Okay, any questions from Ms. Shorter before we entertain a motion?
No, sir. Some moved.
Okay, we got a motion.
Second.
A second, that is to accept the, the grant, to sign it, and it is in the acceptance of the $5 million, correct?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Grady has a smooth copy that he'll.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Now, Madam Clerk, I am going to ask for a roll call vote on this because of the amount of it.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Andy, we appreciate you being here today.
Excuse me, Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
I apologize, I did not see you back there.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, item six, we have this morning with us Ms. Leslie Young, our Tax Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Jones. Good morning, Vice Chairman Booker.
Morning.
And good morning to all the Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you for having me this morning. Before I get started, I want to first personally thank all of you for my reappointment for the next four years. I thoroughly enjoy serving as your Tax Administrator, so thank you very much for that. One item, before we get started on the settlement, that I think will be of interest to everyone, is we are on schedule, and I have been reassured that the tax notices will mail this Thursday. So based on our prior mailings with our print vendor, the tax notices should be in the mailboxes beginning this Saturday. Okay? Tax notices will mail this Thursday. Quick update, our Board of Equalization and Review, we are beginning to have our appeals beginning next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings. This will wrap up our Residential Board of E and R appeals, and as of this morning, we have 25. Eleven of those have already either accepted or withdrawn their appeal. So we're down to 25 residential appeals for next week.
I'm here this morning in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 105-373. It says I'm to report to you each year the settlement of the tax year. You will see the settlement in front of you there. There are about three items that are noteworthy, this right here, that I want to speak on. If you will, about halfway down, more than halfway down, you'll see there a net levy amount of just more than $53 million there. Our net levy increased for tax year 2022 by just over $725,000. Now, before I get into too many numbers here, I want to be clear to everyone listening that the numbers I'm giving you this morning have no impact or influence of our revaluation 2023. This is only tax year 2022, and it's only for our real estate and personal property, not our registered motor vehicles. Okay? So we had a net levy to increase by more than $725,000, and I contribute a lot of that due to growth in the county. With that, one that I'm very excited about to report, last year this time, I had Department of Revenue come in and assess our tax department to see where we could have efficiencies in our workflow, and how we can handle better our workload. And in those findings, we have adjusted, we've made some adjustments, and we still have a few more to go over the next couple of years. But you will see here, in our total releases, refunds, and write-offs, compared to the year before, we have approximately $56,000 less for tax year 2022 in our releases and refunds. That is contributed to, in simple terms of, we got it right the first time. We got it right before sending out the bills. So that's been a very direct reflection of having our workflow reassessed and given some great pointers by Department of Revenue on our workflow. One other item that I think is noteworthy is our uncollected, our uncollected amount of taxes decreased from last year by $90,000, $90,083. So we have increased our levy by $725,000, and we have collected more than we did the year before by $90,000. So tax year 2022 numbers are a very big improvement. Cindy, if you'll stand for just a minute? I've asked Cindy Glover to join me here this morning. She is our Tax Collection Division Manager. She oversees Alicia Jeffrey, Tim Wagner, Chris Brown. She has been with Craven County for 24 years, and in fact, serving only in our Tax Collection Division. Our tax collection rate improved last year from 98.82% to 99.01. We crossed the threshold to 99, and that was a great, a great goal for us. Now, we don't stop at 99.01, we will, we will keep working harder. But talking about team, it takes making more efficiencies in our workflow, our workload, the growth in our county, which is by our appraisers, to be sure that that is going correctly as well. And then it dominoes over into Cindy's group, and this has allowed Cindy, along with the very hard work that her division puts forth, to reflect that 99.01. Chairman Jones, at this time, I'm to come to you because of North Carolina General Statute 105-373, to ask for approval of this settlement. And if there's no questions, then according to North Carolina General Statute 105-321, then I ask for you to charge, charge me as your tax collector to levy the 2023 taxes.
Okay, before we entertain a motion, are there any questions for the Tax Administrator? I hear none, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second to accept the settlement of the 2022 tax levy? Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call a roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, thank you. And then I think you have another item.
The three, the, the charge.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we'll do that as a separate motion. You've heard the direction by the Tax Administrator, what's desired of the Board. Do I have a motion that we approve the charge?
I make motion to approve that charge.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to charge the tax collector with the tax collection of the 2023 tax levy? Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call a roll again.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Andy, we thank you for what you do for us, too, for our citizens.
Great job.
Yes.
I don't recall hitting 90% in the last few years. We were 88, 89, wherever. That's a big, that's a big deal, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, and if you'll excuse me, I've got to get back on to tax notices. We're quite busy across the street. Thank you, have a great day.
All right, thank y'all for being here. All right, item seven, I'm going to ask the county manager, if he would, to start us out. We've got a process here, Commissioners, that we're going to have to do a lot of moving in and out of the room for this side of it, and we'll ask the attorney to be a part of that conversation, too. So, Jack?
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. As we did last year, because of Senate Bill 473, which passed into law a couple of years ago, it does not allow for a Commissioner that serves on a nonprofit board to actually vote on any appropriation that the Board may see fit to give to that, that group. The best thing we learned last year was that we would simply go through a recusal process for each Commissioner that serves on the Board. They would, the Board would vote on that, they would leave the room, we would have the discussion like we would at budget time, provide information to you about the, the request, and then from that point, you'll vote up or down, and we'll ask that person back, and keep doing that throughout the various different ones. So before we start, any questions on the process? Okay? So we're going to start with item 7A, which is the special appropriation for Allies for Cherry Point Tomorrow, which is ACT. At this point, I believe Commissioner Mitchell does serve as your representative on that Board, so she would need to be recused.
All right, Commissioners, we need a motion pursuant to Senate Bill 473 to recuse Commissioner Mitchell from discussion and voting on this matter. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right, discussion on the motion.
I would like to, I would like to defer that, table that particular motion to, or that particular item.
Altogether?
Altogether, just that one item.
Do we still need to recuse her before we do that?
I think you need to finish the recusal and then actually go with Commissioner Booker's motion. She probably doesn't have to leave the room for it, since it seems like it would be rather quick, but.
What's your advice, Eric?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman and, and Commissioners. We want the record to be a squeaky clean on this, because for the individual Commissioner, there are criminal, criminal sanctions that, of course, we want to avoid, and then any violation of the law results in, you know, a void contract with a particular group. So it's my opinion that Commissioner Mitchell needs to be excused from any matters concerning this appropriation, including a motion to defer it.
Okay. All right, we have the motion, we have the second to recuse her from discussion and voting. Any discussion from the other Commissioners? Hear none? Do we need a roll call vote on it, Eric, or could we just by voice? Or what do you want?
Just a voice vote is fine.
Okay. All those in favor of recusing Commissioner Mitchell, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, she is excused, she's left the room, please state that for the record. Now, Vice Chair Booker.
I would like to table that one item to a future meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to table item 7A, the appropriation to Allies for Cherry Point. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion on the motion? Hear none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is deferred. All right.
Okay. Right, as Commissioner Mitchell's walking back. 7B is our membership into the C-1A. Vice Chairman Booker serves as your Commissioner Representative on that, so he would need to be recused from this conversation.
All right, pursuant to North Carolina, to Senate Bill 473, do I have a motion that we recuse Vice Chair Booker from discussion and voting on this matter?
Some moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Commissioner, Vice Chair Booker is recused from voting or discussion, he's leaving the room for the record.
All right, Commissioners, as in years past, we have a membership in the C-1A, along with the private sector, the City of New Bern, the City of Havelock. Our contribution is $50,360, which works out to 50 cents per capita. That was the original formula that was created in 2014 when the C-1A was put together. So the request from the C-1A is $50,360 for 2023.
All right, discussion, what's desired of the Board?
I move that we approve this.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appropriation of $50,360 as a C-1A contribution from Craven County. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call a roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, someone would get Vice Chair Booker?
Okay, as Commissioner, Vice Chairman Booker's coming back, we're going to do 7C and 7D together. These are both appropriations to the Hope Mission, both from the opioid fund and the general fund. Commissioner Hunt serves on this Board, so she would need to be recused from these two items.
All right, pursuant to Senate Bill 473, we're asking that Commissioner Hunt be recused from discussion or voting on the Hope Mission opioid fund and general fund appropriation. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is any discussion on the motion? Hear none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed, all right? If it will be stated for the record that Mr. Hunt is leaving the room.
Okay, so 7C, as we've discussed in our opioid settlement funding matrix, we would like to have two different allotments this year, one coming from the opioid fund, one coming from the general fund. 7C is the opioid fund, is for $52,000. It is six beds from individuals who are either incarcerated or coming off incarceration to begin rehab services. Facility is in Moritz City, and Commissioner Hunt, of course, is your representative there. So if you want to take them in tandem, we can, or we can do them together, and I can go ahead and describe D.
Let's do, let's do opioid fund first, we'll approve it, if it's okay?
Yes, sir.
Just, there's clarification, all right with you, Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so the first one is from funds from the opioid settlement fund that the county has received, this fifty-two thousand dollars will be pulled out of that and appropriated for that.
Yes, sir.
All right, what's the desire of the board?
Move to approve, as stated.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve fifty-two thousand dollars out of the opioid fund for Hope Mission. Any discussion on the motion? All right, here no discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yep.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
All right, yes, motion passed. All right, then the next one is for Hope Mission General Fund, also of fifty-two thousand dollars.
Sir, this was the original, six beds we leased from them, I believe this is the third allotment. It's worked really well. The board should get a report of these six beds in my memo to you. We're seeing success with it, and I know the folks down there participate with the sheriff's office a lot, they're out at the jail, working with individuals, so I would recommend continuing those six beds.
If I may ask, before we entertain a motion, in years, we, this is what, our third year?
We had a partial year, then a full year last year, and this would be the...
So this would be the third year. In years past, this funding has been in the sheriff's budget, or is it being a separate item also? Can you remember?
It's probably a Craig question. I believe this has been a special appropriation, mainly because they invoice finance for who's there, but I know the sheriff's office reviews the invoice before it comes in.
All right, okay.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, the beds altogether?
So this would be six, and then the first one was six, so twelve?
Twelve altogether.
But Major McFadden has received a federal grant called a COSAP grant, and he intends to have some additional beds in that as well. That's almost ready to come, he's trying to still sort out some of his funding there, but I do suspect he'll be back in the next month or so with that. I think the goal is somewhere between fifteen and eighteen beds.
You good, Ms. B?
Good.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, commissioners, what's the desire of the board?
I move that we accept it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve fifty-two thousand dollars from the general fund for Hope Mission. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, would you get Commissioner Hunt? Thank you.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, seven E is the Highway Seventy Corridor Association Annual Appropriation, and Commissioner Tom Mark would need to be recused from this.
Okay, commissioners, pursuant to Senate Bill 473, I'd ask for a motion to recuse from discussion and voting Commissioner Mark for the Highway Seventy Corridor. Do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, please state for the record that Commissioner Mark is leaving the room.
Okay, commissioners, we have Highway Seventy Corridor Association, we've been members of this for a very long time, I believe dating back to the 2000 alts. It's been twenty-five thousand the entire time, is an equal share between Johnston County, Wayne County, Lenore County, Craven County, and Carteret County. It is headed up by an executive director by the name of Derwin Stevenson, who formerly served on the Board of Transportation, has a lot of experience in getting road projects done. I will tell you, my personal opinion, there's a lot of work going on in Craven County, and if it wasn't for the Highway Seventy Corridor Association in Hugh Overholt, a lot of it probably wouldn't be going on now. So, I can only give them that, other than the hat, I guess. But anyways, twenty-five thousand dollars, Commissioner Mark's your representative there, they meet four times a year.
All right, commissioners, what's your desire?
I make a motion to approve the twenty-five thousand dollars for Highway Seventy Corridor.
Okay, you heard the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and if someone would get Commissioner Mark?
Okay, I believe this is the last one. Under seven F, special appropriations, this is for Realized U-252. This seat was formerly held by Vice Chairman Booker, but now held by Commissioner Howard, so he would need to be recused from.
All right, commissioners, pursuant to Senate Bill 473, I'd ask for a motion to recuse Commissioner Howard from discussion and voting on the Realized U-252.
Some moved.
We have a motion and a second, some of our ladies did it. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed.
Okay, this is the fourth year the county has provided funding to Realized U-252, which is also a recovery facility here in Craven County. This money goes to provide, offset some of the costs that an individual may have when they need to use the facility. It's worded as a scholarship in their request, that's how it's been worded for many years, but it basically pays down the expenses so someone can go. It is twelve thousand dollars, a thousand dollars a month. We have received all the information from the group, and I have met with them this year and feel good about what they're doing. I believe the house is fully occupied now, which was a big goal of theirs.
All right, any questions from the board?
Move that we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve twelve thousand dollars for Realized U-252. Here any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and if someone would also let Commissioner Howard know that we have voted on that, all right? Thank you, sir. All right, Jack, anything further on that?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Commissioners, we'll move to item eight, appointments. You see the pending appointments there before you, are there any nominations for any of those today?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to defer the one for Havelock Board of Adjustment.
Okay, all right. Okay, we wouldn't...
I defer the Havelock Board of Adjustment.
All right, we won't take no action on that today, all right? Any others, conversation on pending? All right, here none, we'll now go to current. The first one is the Craven County Clean Sweep. You have an applicant of Eric Van Norwick, I hope I pronounced that right, who seeks appointment, is that from your area, Commissioner Hunt?
Yes, and that's pronounced correctly as well.
Okay, thank the Lord, I got one right. All right, so you make that nomination?
Highly recommend.
Okay, we have a nomination from Commissioner Hunt, or additional nominations from the floor. Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next would be the Fireman's Relief Fund, you have two there. The first one is Mr. Dan New from Township Three, Dover, who is eligible for reappointment, that is in District Two. I would ask that he be nominated, put his name forth, are there additional nominations from the board? Here none, we were set Mr. New by acclamation. Next would be Mark Dale from Township Eight, West New Bern Rims, Commissioner Mitchell?
Strongly recommend.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Dale, are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we were set by acclamation. Next would be the Emergency Medical Services, you have several there, Mr. Brian McGuire from the Bridston EMS, Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. McGuire, are there additional nominations? Here none, we will accept Mr. McGuire by acclamation. Next would be Michelle Smith from New Bern, I reckon that is Rescue Thirty, New Bern, Craven, that is in my district, I would ask for her reappointment, I would nominate her, are there additional nominations from the floor? All right, here none, we were set by acclamation. All right, next you have a vacated seat of Mr. Whitehead, you have the applicant of Mr. Scott Cleland, he is the new EMS captain, and I think this is one that the statute reads that they hold this seat. So, do we have a nomination?
I nominate Mr....
Cleveland.
Cleveland. Mr. Whitehead is vacated.
He is very excited to see, yes.
You good with Mr. Cleveland?
I am.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Cleveland, are there additional nominations from the floor?
I am in your app, you supply.
All right, here none, we were set by acclamation. All right, Craven County Planning Board, District Two Representative, Mr. Willman, Will Farmer, he's not seeking reappointment, I would ask for defer consideration, if the board would allow today. Just will say, Will's done a great job in serving us in several different capacities, but he's going to law school, I'm real proud of this young man and what he's doing, and so he's going to come back and represent us well in this county. Everybody okay with deferring consideration? All right, we will defer to the next meeting. All right, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, we have the annual meet in August twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth. Custom is that the chairman of the board would usually be the voting delegate, I will not attend, Mr. Vice Chair, it would go to you, are you going to attend?
I am not going to attend.
Okay, the vice chair is not going to attend, so who else is attending?
I'm planning on attending.
You are?
Yes.
All right, you are on the Board of Directors, so if there is no...
I think I'm...
Okay, does anyone have any, I will nominate Commissioner Mitchell, does anyone have additional nominations from the floor?
Uh-uh.
All right, here none, we will have Commissioner Mitchell be our voting delegate, we were set there by acclamation. Madam Clerk, if you will, please send that in.
Okay.
All right, are there any other current appointments that we overlooked? All right, here none, you see the upcoming terms expiring in September, we ask you to please take notice of those. All right, item nine, county attorney's report, Mr. Grady. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, commissioners. I have two items for your consideration this morning, both involve county-owned property acquired through the tax foreclosure process. Unlike most of the board's recent action on similar matters, these properties are not owned jointly with the city of New Bern or any other municipality. The first parcel is an initial offer, it's located at fifty-two hundred Adams Creek Road with a parcel ID number of five dash oh-two-one dash oh-three-six. The offer amount is three thousand, five hundred dollars. The original past due taxes and the cost of the tax foreclosure were two thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and forty-one cents, and the tax value of the parcel was sixteen thousand dollars. As the board is familiar, this is an initial offer, if the board elects to accept it, we'll put it out for upset bids, and after that process concludes, it'll be back before the board for final approval at a later date.
All right, any questions from the board? I do have one, Commissioner Hunt, you probably would be the one to answer this, you know, we've been talking about, would love to have property for a park in Harlow, I know, I looked on the GIS map, I think it's kind of out there a little ways, is this any potential there? Okay, all right, no potential, so what's the desire of the board?
I move that we put it up for upset bid.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution approving transaction and authorizing the upset bid process, is there any discussion on the motion? And this for partial number five dash zero-two-one dash zero-three-six, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed, all right, and you have one more, I think, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, one more, it's three oh-five John Street with a parcel ID number of seven dash oh-oh-five dash oh-one-five, it has a mailing address of New Bern, but it is not within the city limits, it's over in James City. The amount of the offer is one thousand, five hundred dollars. The original past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were two thousand, nine hundred and one dollar and eight cents, and the tax value of the property is three thousand, is with the other parcel, if the board approves this, we'll put it out for upset bids, and it'll be back before the board for final approval at a later date.
Okay, what's the desire of the board?
I want to make a motion that we do put it up for upset bid, it's in James City, in the area where we're trying to get things cleaned up, so a new owner might be...
Okay, I think Commissioner Howard, did you make the second?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I heard it from down here, okay. Commissioner Mark, seconds the motion, that is to adopt the resolution approving transaction authorizing the upset bid process for partial number seven dash zero-zero-five dash zero-one-five. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you. All right, county manager's report, Mr. White.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a report, I just want to, other than just to remind the board, at eleven AM or sooner today, we're going to have a ribbon cutting in our new carts facility on the property where the Judicial Center is, so welcome anybody in the audience, or anybody can hear this, to come visit with us and see the new facility.
All right, question for you, are we going to recess this meeting to go to carts, how do we want to do that this morning?
Will we come back?
Mr. Chairman, you would need to recess only if there's any thought that the board would take any action or make any deliberations out there. If it's purely a ribbon cutting or a social type of visit, which it sounds like to me, I would just adjourn the meeting.
As hot as it is, I don't think there's going to be too many of you sticking around too long.
Yes, sir.
All right, so then if I don't hear no ejection, at the end of the meeting today, we will, we will adjourn this meeting, so, all right, thank you, Jack, appreciate it. Next we have commissioners' report, who would like to go first today? The volunteers, Commissioner Smith, you're agreeing, you want to go first?
Oh, you don't need me to go first, well, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share. First of all, our history tells me that our family's been involved with military from World War One up until present day, and to this point, we have, we have never had a Colonel, we had Lieutenant Kellert, but we, last week, my nephew became Colonel, so I'm very proud of that, and I'd like to announce that. Also, last week, on Thursday, the East Carolina Development Workforce Board met for their end-of-the-year meeting and awards, and the, we met at Smokes, and Smoke gave his testimony, which was wonderful, sharing how his Mego started and going through workforce development, he ended up owning, you know, all that he owns in New Bern, and very proud of that, and several other testimonies, very similar, showing that people that were almost homeless have grown and become so successful by going through this project, so I wanted to share that with you. I also met last week with the People's Assembly in, in, in New Bern, that was in Duffy Field area, and they are working on ways to improve the community, everybody's dealing with the, working with the drug issues in New Bern and Craven County, but they're concerned with that, with taxes and homes that are decaying, so you'll be hearing more from, about that. I'm going quickly, because I know we have other things to do, but those are a couple of the things that we've done in this last meeting.
Thank you, thank you for your work. Commissioner Hunt?
Yeah, in keeping with Team Craven this week, I'd like to make note that I enjoyed spending time with Commissioner Mitchell, Sheriff Chip Hughes, and the new director of the animal shelter this past weekend. We all went out and walked some dogs and pet some kitty cats and learned about all the volunteer opportunities that's available at Craven Pan Amical Animal Shelter, and I would encourage anyone that's looking to get a few extra steps in to go and sign up to volunteer. And on another note, Team Craven, I'd like to commend Sergeant Coontz and her team that's heading up the electronic offenders monitoring program in the sheriff's office. In addition to the many tasks that they have taken on, they currently have a very successful GED program going on in the prison. I was happy to learn about it and see the success that they are having so far, so that when these offenders come out, they can move forward in being productive members of Craven County again, and I enjoyed my time there with them, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioner Mark?
Yes, I attended a PCG, a program of the state, mostly active around the Craven County schools.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Mitchell?
I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Hunt had to say at the, at the animal shelter, the parking lot was packed, it was good to see that, it's good to see that Dr. Osler is on board, already making some changes, planning more in terms of new programs, new developments, so I hope our citizens will stay tuned, there are going to be some great things that are going to be happening at the animal shelter, and I'm looking forward to the open house on the fifth of August.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howard?
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman. I got the opportunity to kind of drive around Craven County with Mr. Wood and Mr. White over the last few weeks, and it was interesting to see what, how many irons in the fire that Mr. Wood has going on right now for economic development and development in this county. We, also was, I was, I don't know, I was almost taken aback by some of the housing development going on, just, and you drive through these new constructions, and it's sold before it's built, there's already a sold sign up, so just a reminder how booming and wonderful things are going here in Craven County, just a lot of facets to what's going on, so thank you guys for that, especially a thank you to Mr. Wood for giving me that tour with Mr. White. That's it.
Vice Chair Booker?
This isn't a positive thing, but it was important, and that is that I attended the press conference, I think it was last week, where the sheriff and the chief of police held a press conference to discuss the, I'll call it a murder, of a one-year-old little baby girl. And the main thing that came out to me during that press conference was the appeal by the chief of police and the sheriff, strong appeal, for people to speak up and tell what happened, happened, tell what's going on. And they said, "We can't solve these crimes if we don't get citizens to help us." They gave the fact that there's an anonymous number that people can call, so they won't have their name involved. They gave a passionate plea, and it was an emotional, emotional time. So congratulations to the Sheriff and the Chief.